Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good.
All right, there we go. All right, welcome to the October 3rd, 2023, 4 o'clock work session meeting of the Griffin Spalding County Schools Board of Education. Ask that you place your cell phones or your apparatuses on vibrate. And we are ready to do our roll call. Dr. Simmons.
Good afternoon. Oh, it's like that. Good afternoon.
Energy today.
Fine, fine, I see how it's gonna be. Starting with the women to my right, District 5, Ms. Sue McDonald.
Good afternoon. Present.
Ms. Barbara Jo Cook.
Present.
Mrs. Zachary Holmes.
Present.
Mr. Will Doss.
Present.
Chairman Austin Intel Brown.
What up, yo?
Okay, all right then. Mr. Brown, we have a quorum, all members of the board are here, sir.
All right, we definitely have a quorum, so it's time to get down to business. All right, now let's move into item two of our agenda. Our pledge allegiance will be led by Ms. Sue McDonald and our prayer will be led by Mr. Will Doss.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father Lord, we just thank you for this day. But we just pause and take a moment and remember these two families, Father Lord, that have been so affected this past weekend. We ask, Father Lord, that you bring comfort in every way. We thank you, Father Lord, that you will continue to move, Father Lord, on their behalf. I pray, Father Lord, for the, this work session and the presentations and the things that are being considered, that you'll give us wisdom and direction in all that we say and do. And that you will give us, Father Lord, the insight on how we can continue to move Griffin Spalding County School System to be the very best that it can be. Lord, I thank you for each and every person that is present, Lord, and the capacity in which they are here and that you will bless them and prosper them. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right, item three of our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body? It relates to item three, the adoption of the agenda. Turn your microphone on, please. The record needs to hear you, sir. Don't maybe Eric, don't maybe Eric maze you.
Mr. Chair, motion. Present it. Are any addendums or?
All right, it's been properly moved by Leader Holmes of the Third to adopt this agenda. It's been seconded by the vice chair of this board, Mr. Doss of the Second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? When your district is called, please vote. District 1, yes. District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Five zero, therefore approved. Consent agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to item four, the consent agenda?
Do you accept?
I'll second.
All right, it's been properly moved by the gentle lady of the 5th District and seconded by the gentleman of the 2nd District. What is the pleasure of this body? When your district is called, please vote. District 1, yes. District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Therefore approved, five oh. Presentations and discussions. Item 1, district operations, beginning of the year updates. Dr. Donald Ice Cold Warren.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, board members and audience. Want to provide to you a update on district operations. First of all, we have a couple of non-negotiables known by the acronym of PACE. We want to strive to be professional, accountable, and to communicate effectively. We have five focus areas, which are literacy, enrollment, attendance, discipline, and solving, as in mathematics problems. On the bottom left, you see our results pyramid, where we believe that an individual's experiences determines their beliefs, which impacts their actions and results. And we believe on the model, in the model, see it, own it, solve it, do it. Our mission and vision, for a vision, we strive to have a distinctive brand, strong leaders, and great schools. And our mission is to empower each student to graduate college and career ready. For our roadmap to success, of course, we have four goal areas designated in the green boxes. The boxes on the right in black are our strategic priorities. On today's presentation, focuses on the bedrock of the strategic plan, which relates to organizational and operational efficiency, which impacts all the goal areas above it. So I'll walk you through several of those operations today. This is our district operations team that I have the pleasure of working with. They are here in the audience. School nutrition, Mr. Willer is our director. Facilities and maintenance, Mr. Bruce Ballard. Transportation, Mr. Patrick Martin, who you met a few minutes ago. Glad to have him aboard with us from Atlanta Public Schools. School safety and security, Mr. Donald Britt. Athletics, Mr. Bill Stikes. Okay, this first slide represents our school nutrition program, which you know is pretty much a self-supporting program. Here, our participation rates. If you take a look at the year 2019, that was pre-pandemic. We only had 38% of our students eating breakfast and about 68% eating lunch. However, over the last two years, that has increased from August, September of 2022 and 23. You see the increase there. Currently, this school year, we're at 52.8% of our students eating breakfast, 82.6% eating lunch. Year over year, we've gone up breakfast 7.8 percentage points, lunch 6.6 percentage points. Since 2019, take a look at those double-digit gains. This is a big increase in both breakfast and lunch, pretty much due to our CEP program, where students getting no cost to them. So no more of the raising money that Ms. McDonald spearheaded to pay kids' lunch bills. We're CEP and proud of it. Both our breakfast and lunch participation rates are higher than the state averages. The state average for breakfast is about 35 to 40% after lunch, 65 to 7%. I'm also happy to report, Mr. Holmes, that the feeding for our football teams went off very well on last week at both Griffin and Spalding High School. So we have a, have a plan of action. We put it in place and it served its purpose last week and we'll do it again this week. So kudos to Mr. Willer and his team. Staffing metrics. For school nutrition, the number of students that eat daily impacts the number of school nutrition personnel. Presently, we have 85 out of 104 positions that are staffed. That equates to 82% position fill rate. We're actually feeding more kids with fewer staff than we did in 2019. You may say, well, why is that happening? Thanks to Mr. Will and his team, we're running a more efficient program, where we do less cooking from scratch and serve more pre-cooked foods to still meet high nutritional levels. Resignations, since June 1, we've had 10. Hiring since June 1, we've had eight. So that's a net loss of two. And I'll speak about filling vacancies at the end as a solution. We've been partnering with Ms. Ballard and her team. Some of the reasons for resignations, of course, people retire from us as longtime employees. Some resign to do other work in different industries. Also, some come to us and wear their second career. So they'll work with us for a while, then they'll retire again. So those are some of the reasons for the resignations. Employee attendance. Take a look this year at our attendance performance. FMLA plays a part in attendance and subtle injuries from time to time. Our ladies and gentlemen may get injured in the kitchen. Mr. Will and his staff are great to go out and work in kitchens as needed to ensure the kids are served. Called today, I looked out my window, I saw his truck. I wanted to go down to his office and ask about a couple of items. They were working on a project. And 10 minutes later, looked out and he was gone. So I called his cell phone, where you headed to? He was over to Axon Elementary School because they were short-staffed. So him and Ms. Flowers and ladies, they do a good job of going up to schools to support them as needed. But as you can see, in August, we had a 95% attendance rate, dipped slightly in November to 93%. Thus far, for the school year, running total, 94% attendance rate. Facilities and maintenance, want to walk you through what happens to work orders. We use a computerized maintenance management system. And back in May, we switched from Macromane Classic to Macromane Global to manage our work orders. In retrospect, we didn't really have a choice, but we liked the older system better, and I'll tell you why in a second. We had trainings for school-based personnel. When a work order comes in at the school level, it's screened by the lead custodian before that work order is actually entered into the system. So anything beyond the scope of a building custodian, that's referred to Ms. Ballard and his team for a work order. So it goes from the lead custodian, comes a work order, it goes to a maintenance supervisor or a construction and facilities director. They'll make a prioritized list, and then that work order is assigned to our maintenance personnel or subcontractors. One of the subcontractors that we engaged in recently was a local locksmith to take care of the locksmith needs at our buildings. So that was very timely and really needed to make certain that we can keep our buildings secure with the locksmiths. This slide is a work order summary from May of this year through September. The number completed, the number issued, and the percent completed. Want to make a note to you that our new Macromane platform, Global, only allows reporting for a defined period of time. But I'll tell you, if you look at, say, August, there were 317 work orders completed out of 590. September, 133 completed out of 361. I can assure you that in August, we completed more than that number. But because you're going to do it in a defined timeframe, that's a deficiency, unfortunately, in the new platform. And Bruce has been in contact with them to see if we can get that feature added. But it has its pros and cons. The new version is more user-friendly, it's outbase as well, but they are still reporting deficiencies. So again, completed work orders from the previous month, unfortunately, not captured in data for the current month, but additional work orders were, were completed. Also, as it relates to facilities and maintenance, we're working to fill five vacancies in the department, okay? As it relates to custodian staffing metrics, I'm happy to report that all schools are fully staffed with a custodian. Although some of them are not GSES employees yet, they may be from a temporary agency. When it comes to the breakdown, we have 65 out of 89 are actually GSES employees for 73%. And 24 are from our temp agencies. So we get feedback from the, Ms. Ballard and his team, from the lead custodian, assistant principals, principals. After their probationary period is up, if the individual is doing well, then Bruce and his team will meet and decide to onboard the person as a full-time, full-time employee. Transportation. We have pretty much a brand-new leadership team this year. You met Mr. Martin, our director. Ms. Kimberly Martin is our assistant director. I sort of joined, Ms. Hamilton, Ms. Hamilton, I'm sorry, not Ms. Martin. Will you stand, please, let me know who you are?
Yeah, it's good to see you, Ms. Hamilton. Yeah, thanks. I was hoping she'd be here, thanks.
Yes, yes, Ms. Hamilton really held it down back in the spring and summer in Louisville director. And I'm very grateful for her work and also the other members of the leadership team in transportation. We have a newly hired logistics manager, Michelle O'Quelo. She's gonna start, I think, on the 5th of this week, a logistics manager. We have a brand-new dispatcher, Mr. Steve Newman. He was one of our drivers that would not be a dispatcher. And Mr. Sean Schultz, who was over in the shop, he is a driver supervisor. And Cedric Henley is also a driver supervisor. So this is our leadership team for transportation. On-time arrival in the AM and PM. Here are definitions and times as it relates to time for on-time arrival. And elementary school was shooting for 7:30 AM. So any bus arriving after 7:30 AM is considered tardy. High school was shooting for 8:15. Middle school was shooting for 8:45. In the afternoon, elementary school was shooting for 2:20. High school, 3:15. And middle school, 4 o'clock, okay? Those are defined on-time arrivals for our different grade levels in AM and PM. We are tracking the on-time arrival of each bus. And I want to walk you through this. And you'll see, here are the AM arrival percentages on time and the PM arrival percentages on time for both elementary school and middle school. So as you can see, we want to strive to be as high as possible. You know, love to be 100%. Realistically, you know, 90% would be great. September, we had 98.7% on-time arrival in the AM. High school, 98.6%. Middle school, it was 89.6% in September. In the PM, picking them up, elementary, 95.2%. High school, 93.6%. Middle school, 92.2%. I want to mention to you what's a double route. We average 12 double routes a day, sometimes less, sometimes more. A double route is defined as when a driver is running his or her assigned route. Plus, in the morning, they go back to the neighborhood, pick up a different set of kids, bring them to school. Or in the afternoon, they run their route, their assigned route, they go back to the school, pick up a group of kids, take those kids home. Now, that's, that's what you call a double route. In this data here, based upon the limitation of the capacity of the software, which all of our buses are GPS-tracked, we can only track the assigned routes, okay? So again, the data, it's not all good, but it's not all bad either. We can only track the assigned routes that's in the, in the platform for logistics. And as we dealing with subs that we found at last minute, we're just trying to find, trying to find a drive to cover that route, get those kids to or from school in a safe, efficient manner as possible. So again, all this data, not all good, not all bad as well. The double routes impact that. Also attendance and vacancies, which I'll get to shortly. Of course, you know, we had a task force last year and we changed our school daytimes. So I have some comparisons for August and September, for August and September of 2022 as compared to August and September of 2023. Once you take a look at the blue columns, you'll notice that we have some slight improvement, okay? We have some slight improvement. In August, the AM increased by about two percentage points. And the AM, PM in August, it went up about four percentage points to right at 93%. September, we're up about three percentage points in AM compared to 2022. And at PM, we're only up about 1.8%, okay? These improvements in on-time are very encouraging, especially with our not being fully staffed. We're currently staffed at 91% fill rate, okay? Bus driver staffing metrics. Based upon our routes, we need 94 bus drivers. We currently have 86, so we're eight short. Since June 1, we've had 11 resignations for various reasons, and we've had nine hiring. So that's a net loss of two. So again, 91% staffed. Presently in training, we have four individuals in training to be drivers. Two of those will start next week, and those two will be placed on some of our longer routes, larger routes to break them up. And every driver pretty much covers two tiers, be it elementary, high school, elementary, middle, or high school, middle. Nobody just drives one tier, they drive two tiers for us, okay? So again, we're at 91% fill rate. Bus driver attendance. And we love to have them all here 100% each day. Of course, that, that's not realistic. But in August, 22 workdays, 95 full or partial absences, averaged 4.3 per day, 95% attendance rate. Had some meeting with some individuals, some individuals returned from FMLA. I think we hired one driver, so we increased it to 96.8%. So thus far, for the school year, we have a 95.9% attendance rate for our bus drivers. Our goal realistically is to have a 98% attendance rate each day. School safety and security. In August, each school is required to have two drills, two fire drills. In August, we had 95% compliance. It was more of a reporting issue to the state portal for two schools that has since been addressed. It's just a reporting issue. In September, in Louisville Fire Drill, we did an intruder drill, where Mr. Stikes and Mr. Britt went to the schools. And with our gym representative, and they conducted the intruder drills. I, I went out a couple of them, I was over at ACK, I recall. Each school did that 100%, okay? So that's the expectation. So we are in compliance with state law. Lastly, I added this slide since it was sent to you all on athletics. For our fall sports, we currently have 397 high school students participating in fall sports, that's 15%. Middle schools, we have 200. Middle schools, we have two-hundred-and-sixty-six students participating in fall sports, that's thirteen percent. So with that fifteen percent, we're on the higher end for high school. For the year, we're tracking to have at least thirty percent of our kids involved in sports. You know, you get more kids involved in sports, and they show activities, the fine arts, the CTE clubs and whatnot. They become a bear, a jaguar, a panther, what have you. And hopefully, it increases the academic performance. So compared to last year, at the high school level, we're up eleven point two percentage points in terms of percentage of kids participating in fall sports. Lastly, here are some of our efforts for recruiting and retention and improving attendance. Working with Ms. Battle and her staff to have intentional classified recruitment job fairs. School nutrition, they're paying the cost of background checks for nutrition candidates. Retention supplements, Ms. Battle and her team put out a great plan for retention supplements that, I think it happens three times a year. And it's happened once, so already happened two more times, that's great. And also, Ms. Battle and her team are working with myself, Mr. Willer, Mr. Martin, to develop an attendance recognition system for our employees to recognize attendance each month and each semester, okay? So these are some efforts we're doing to tackle issues we have. We can hire more drivers, of course, our on-time percentage rate will even go higher. Participation for lunch and breakfast could increase as well, although they are presently above state average. All right, this concludes my presentation to you on district operations.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Warren, for the presentation. We have questions, we're gonna go ahead and go to the gentleman of the third district for questioning. Turn your microphone on.
Slide.
Yes, sir.
If you could go back to that, I just wanted to get some clarification out of how.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification how you all are doing it. When you have, we'll just look from May to June. And when you have three-hundred-and-fifty-one work orders issued and you completed two-twenty-five, the difference in that, do you carry that over into the next month? How do you, how are you all tracking that?
Yes, sir.
Versus starting over each month? Are you carrying over, or how does that work?
And the calculation, based upon the new software platform, doesn't carry over in the percentages. But in reality, it does carry over, Ms. Battle and her staff, they are getting those work orders done and completed. So, in June, for that defined timeframe, June first to end of June, there was one-on-seven, but they were working on work orders from May. Again, it's a function of the defined timeframe of the new software.
Okay, I just wanted to make that, make sure that was, my assumption was right. That way, you know, that's why you see some disparity in the numbers following, you know, the month of May down to September.
Yes, sir. Based upon the previous software, where we could track it just by any timeframe, we averaged about eighty-five, eighty-seven percent completion rate. Now, it's sort of hard to track by the number of days per work order, because at times, you're having to wait on parts come in. It may be a day or two, maybe a week. I know back in the spring, I think it was, Ms. Battle, the intercom went out to Griffin High, was it the spring? Yeah, we had to wait several weeks for parts to come in, I believe from Canada, I thought I missed that, because it was the older system. So that delayed it, but they did come in, they did get it fixed, and it's operable.
Any other questions, Leader Holmes?
Oh, sir, that's.
Mr. Brown.
All right, the gentle lady of the fifth district, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I don't really have a question, Dr. Warren. Ms. Hamilton, will you stand up, please? I just wanted to personally thank you for taking one for the team. I know that your name came up many times in our discussions trying to replace Mr. Harris. And I just wanted to publicly thank you for what you did, not only for our transportation department, but for our system. Because without you, I'm not sure where we would be. And I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I know. Obviously, I speak for not only myself, but my colleagues, so I just wanted to recognize you for that. Mr. Martin, you got a keeper here now, so.
All right, the gentle lady has much passion for which she speaks. Are there any other questions pertaining to this presentation? All right, here and none, thank you so much, Dr. Warren.
Thank you all, and again, thank you all for your support on approving purchase orders and memos that we request, so that's needed, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, staffing agency partnerships, Mrs. Judy K. Skiwe Battle.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, and Superintendent Simmons. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our potential partnership expansion with our staffing agencies. The goal area that this, that this presentation speaks to is goal area two, high-performing staff. So I did come to you during the summer regarding our partnership with Blazer Works. And we wanted to give you a little more information about what that partnership entails. Blazer Works is a company that has a collaboration with Solyant, ProCare. We also have partnerships with Stepping Stones and Maxim. We use these staffing agencies to staff hard-to-fill positions, special services, including special ed physicians, math, science, and social studies. Blazer Works has been in business since 2017, and it serves as the point of contact. We've been granted a case manager who helps us fill vacancies. And Stepping Stones has been in business since 1991. So together, we use Stepping Stones, Blazer Works, and Maxim Healthcare to help fill positions. Our current partnership entails sixteen teachers and seven paraprofessionals. We recognize the need to expand that partnership with unexpected resignations and vacancies since the start of the school year. So I wanted to bring you some background information about the company, the services that they provide, with the intention of bringing a recommendation back to you in the October board meeting for your review and approval. Do you have any questions about this partnership and this information that we've shared with you today?
All right, members of the body, we have any questions regarding this presentation? All right, here and none.
All right, so I'll move right into the next presentation, and this is departmental updates for human resources. And again, this presentation is going to speak to you about high-performing staff. So just to give you an update of some of the work from HR, this school year, with our HR tags, all of this is from July. Our HR technicians processed two-hundred-and-forty-five new hires. We did have thirty-one employees that did not show. They went through the process, were approved and recommended, they decided not to accept the position. And we have completed seventy-two certification transactions. Those transactions include initial certifications, renewals, conversions, people coming into the district that need to get their certificates in order. Our employee benefits, we processed a hundred-and-seventy-six requests for the enrollment process. We have had since July forty-five employees out on FMLA. And this year to date, we have twenty-six workers' compensation claims. As of last week, when we put together this presentation, we have fifty-one vacancies throughout the district. Seventeen of those positions are certified, thirty-four are classified. We did complete our professional learning mandatory compliance training. And if you look at the completion rates as of September twenty-sixth, almost ninety-one percent of our schools had a hundred percent completion rates. Our department is still completing at eighty-four percent. We have had new hires that skew the completion rate, because we give them forty-five days to complete that training. We had a remote learning day on September the twenty-second. So during that day, courses were offered, content-based instruction, job-embedded training. There was training for certified as well as classified. Each job classification had an opportunity to participate in professional learning. You can look at the feedback from that remote learning day. Ninety-four percent of the participants highlighted effective practices. And you can see, we had about three percent that did not agree with that statement. But overall, we had a successful professional learning day. This is something that was newly implemented last year, and it was the new hire onboarding. We have monthly sessions. We bring in newly hired individuals to get them acclimated to Griffin's Spalding County schools. We provide them with their logins, their platforms, we give them a brief overview of the technology. And we review benefits and district expectations. And if you look at that feedback, the majority of the people were overall satisfied with that onboarding process. So as part of our recruitment, retention, and recognition work, we did host a classified job fair. We were looking intentionally to hire bus drivers, school nutrition workers, custodial staff, and paraprofessionals. We did that in August. In September, we had an acceleration zone job fair, where we focused on our UVA schools. We did issue our first retention payment. This year, we issuing three retention payments for a grand total of three thousand dollars for each full-time employee. In August, we did host, HR hosted and provided breakfast for our transportation department, just as a show of appreciation. And in September, we did provide sweets from Kizzy Cakes to our school nutrition department. And we are utilizing a drawing system to recognize employees throughout the district who have perfect attendance month to month. This is another benefit, and again, we thank you for allowing us to provide this to employees. We have employee emotional and well-being sessions. They're done in person, they're done virtually, but that gives you an overview of those services provided. We have also served five families. We support the families of employees, especially those who have grieved or grieved. We still have our employee assistance program that's available by calling a toll-free number. This year, we implemented for the first time, three sessions are care for the caregivers. A lot of our employees are taking care of aging parents and raising their own children. So we put in place a support workshop to help them get support and resources, and we had forty-nine attendees. We also continue to do our state interviews. We launched our state interviews, we looked at the people who were here last year and decided to come back. And we did get feedback from all of those participants. And we did have very positive feedback. And overwhelmingly, the individuals that came back indicated they come back because of their leader. That's why they come back to their school. We did a culture and climate survey for a department, we're still analyzing that feedback, and we want to debrief with that director, as well as that executive director, we'll share those results later. We did a first thirty-days survey. All of our employees that were hired in July, we sent them a survey to give us feedback. And we wanted to know their satisfaction level with the process of onboarding, hiring, the supports that they received, our new teacher orientation, our onboarding. We did a mentor survey. This is something that we thought was necessary, because we want to enhance our current mentoring program. So our mentors did give us feedback, and overwhelmingly, they would like more time to observe their mentee. We have recruitment ambassadors that we're going to select, we're looking for five ambassadors that will help us when we start our recruitment season. And we will utilize their services to help, you know, promote our district. This is an update on our exit interviews. So from July, we had thirteen exit interviews. Two of them were done online, and we had one that was actually done in person. Our current form allows employees to request the face-to-face meeting, and we set those meetings up when requested. In August, we had five exit interviews completed, and in September, we had three. Looking at our substitutes and our fill rates for August and September, we were holding at seventy-eight percent. We're monitoring that every week, and we expect to see those fill rates increase. We also noticed that the unfilled rates were starting to trend upward for these five schools. So we worked with SPUR, and we identified what we call a daily report substitute. A substitute that reports to the building every day. And upon arrival, they'll receive their assignment for the day. So since our partnership with SPUR in April, we've hired a hundred-and-ninety-two subs overall. We hired a hundred-and-eleven substitute teachers, thirty-four parapros, sixteen school nutrition staff, twelve custodians, and nineteen clerical. The Wise Mentorship Program, Wisdom and Senior Educators Mentoring Program. And this is where we tap into our retirees. Our retired educators are going to come back and help with our UVA schools and serve as mentors for our induction-phase teachers. This is part of our retention efforts to keep people beyond those first three years. We also, we continue to have our Pathway to Leadership. Our Quality Leaders Program has launched, this cohort has three people. And our aspiring assistant principals has eleven. Our Superintendent's Academy for Aspiring Principals currently has four participants. Again, we continue to offer support for our acceleration zone schools, the job fairs, the daily substitutes. And we are modifying that in teacher induction program to help those individuals get acclimated to our district. Our volunteers, we launched the new platform this year. So far, for the Spalding Collaborative, we processed seven. But overall, we processed a hundred-and-fifty-one volunteers since July. And our new volunteer process requires professional learning for our volunteers, understanding do's and don'ts. And it also gives them mandated reporter training. We also have a, we're really proud of this. Now with this new platform, the turnaround time has moved from three to five, from two to three weeks to three to five days. So we can truly get those individuals approved, notify the school, and get them in a school where they can volunteer to help children. So this year, we have a new hire personal connection. Members of senior cabinet have been tasked with going out to the schools and making a personal connection with each new hire. Going, just putting names, giving cell phones, and finding out what supports, what that experience has been like. And we report out and brainstorm on ways that we can help make things better. Also, we're dealing with some complex legal matters. We've resolved three, and this is since July, we've resolved three. We currently have two pending, and we have successfully controverted unemployment claims. And that also is a cost-saving benefit to the district. So I thank you for your attention.
All right, thank you, thank you so much, Mrs. Battle. Are there any questions for Mrs. Battle's presentation?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, if I could ask.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Battle a question on the slide, professional learning, new hire onboarding, monthly session. Yes, sir. I wanted to ask you, what do you do? How do y'all disaggregate or do a deep dive on where, I know this is anonymous, correct? Or are the new hire, do they identify themselves when they do the survey?
Okay, now, this survey, they're identified.
They're identified?
Yeah.
Okay, do y'all, and I'm honing in on where you see some, they give a very dissatisfied or a dissatisfied, and even possibly the neutral. Do you all do a deep dive, do they give any specifics why they scored it in those sections? Do y'all do a deep dive to follow up? Maybe they have a misconception or something, and you follow up to, you know, further explain. Explain to me, how do y'all, do you all even address those areas?
That's a very good question, and with those, they are allowed to write comments. And for some people, it was centered around scheduling of, you know, when we have it. In terms of, do we follow back up with them to see what we could have done differently? In terms of, do we follow back up with them to see what we could have done differently? We haven't, but that would be a learning opportunity for us.
Is that, Mr. Chair?
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Mrs. McDonald, General Lady of the Fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Miss Battle, for that report. The question I have is, when I, as most of you know, I live out in Sun City. And the question I have is, when Albert Solomon got all the volunteers together from Sun City to go through their, his training, and he does a wonderful job, I just want to give him a shout out because he's just a fine person. The question came up to me, because I went by there that day just to thank them for what they will do for our students and our families in our schools once they get through the process. His question to me was, is there any way that we could pay for the background check of our volunteers that are in our schools? And can you, how is that done? If I want to volunteer for Beaverbrook, do I have to pay for my own background check?
And historically, yes, that has, that's the way it's been. And, you know, we would have to have budget talks about that to make sure that we could fund that. But yeah, the volunteers do currently pay. With the exception of Spalding Collaborative, there was already a pre-existing agreement where the district does pay for Spalding Collaborative.
Okay, so perhaps leaving the collaborative over here and putting Sun City volunteers over here, could we perhaps do something special for Sun City volunteers? Who are most often senior citizens, limited incomes, that type thing. Could we perhaps look at that in the future to help volunteers from Sun City be afforded the opportunity to? And several people, when I was there that day, going around talking to people, several people mentioned that to me. Not just Mr. Solomon, the director of all the volunteers in Sun City. So perhaps we could do something in the future for them.
We can look at that and look at some numbers.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Are there any questions regarding this presentation? Oh, I have one. Mrs. Battle, if you would go to the exit interviews slide. I just want to make sure that it's the current one where we added question number 17.
It is.
Great.
It is.
Awesome. All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Battle. Next up, Teaching and Learning Beginning of the Year Update. She's pretty in pink, but she looks good in green, Dr. Tiffany Taylor.
Well, thank you, fine Chairman of the Board, Board of Education and Superintendent Simmons. And so, of course, I am here to give just our beginning-of-the-year data from the Teaching and Learning Department. So we have heard this afternoon several presentations that address the organizational and operational efficiency. We heard from Miss Battle in regards to the support for high-performing staff. And we did not, while we did not hear about family and community engagement, we know that that is also a piece that is important, that leads overall to our student achievement. So the purpose of today is to share with you, really just to check up or check in in terms of where we are with our beginning-of-the-year map for reading and math, our core content areas. And then also, I'm going to give you our beginning-of-the-year data on Lexiles and also Orton-Gillingham. So first, today, I will begin to go through our NWEA map growth. And we know that we have been giving the map assessment in various areas for several years. And so as I share this data with you today, keep in mind that this data is used to identify students who need additional supports, interventions, perhaps enrichment. Also, as a district, we look at this data so that we can plan supports from the Teaching and Learning Department. And then finally, we also look at our map data to identify particular grade levels or contents that are in need of professional learning. So I'll begin today by looking at our trend data. And so I do go back for you, I'm back to the fall of 2019. And I'll just remind you that the red line is there to indicate that in this year, the norms were reset after COVID. And in the very far right column, you will see the achievement norms. And we know that achievement norms compare light students at the same point in time and the same grade level across the nation. And so the very far column are the norms in terms of where students are typically scoring. And we know that we receive a RIT, R-I-T, that stands for Ready for Instruction Today. This is a norm reference test, as mentioned. What you'll notice here is that we do show improvement when we compare light students from fall of one year to fall of the next year in most areas, except for the sixth-grade area that is highlighted there in red. Other than that area, and then third grade, I didn't highlight it because it's almost the same third grade, fall '23-'24, as it was last year. And so, again, this just represents that at this point in time, we are starting the year off generally around where we have been historically this point in the year. That's one way to look at it, just grade, grade level from year to year. The second way that you can look at this data is by looking at it diagonally. So for instance, if you look at first grade in the fall of, excuse me, in the fall of '22-'23, and you draw a diagonal to the fall '23-'24, you will see that first-grade students now in second grade have had an improvement. So those are two different ways that you may look at this data. I move now into our reading map. Again, we use the RIT, Ready for Instruction Today, to compare our students to national norms. And you do see those achievement norms listed in the far right column. I've highlighted for you six, excuse me, let me go to my page here. Okay, I have highlighted for you several grades. And so you'll see in third grade, fourth, sixth, ninth, and tenth. This is different from the previous slide that I showed you for math, where there was only one or two areas where there was a little bit of decline. But you'll see there are several areas that we will keep our eyes on this year. In particular, I will point you to third grade, and I'll point you to sixth grade. These declines are similar to what I shared with you in the spring of last year when I brought you the Georgia Milestone scores. Remember, at that time, we were talking about the decline in fifth grade. So we certainly have our eyes on those students, as those students are now in sixth grade. Moving to the next presentation, the next chart here. This is our map reading projected proficiency. The difference in this report from the last report is that this is our best predictor in terms of how will our students perform at the end of the year in the spring on the Georgia Milestones assessment. And so what the map assessment has done is taking, taken our state cut scores and given us, if a student gets to a particular score, they would be projected to be proficient on our state assessment. And so the main thing to know here is that we want less red, more blue, and more green. And so I am happy to report to you that from looking at this data set, the percentage of students who are projected to be proficient in reading as compared to last year, we do see that we are starting out with more students who are projected at the distinguished, which is the blue, and at the proficient level, which is the green. We have, as a matter of fact, the same number or percentage of students who were projected in the yellow in the developing last year, 32.9. That is the same percentage that we had this time last year. Now, as we look at our math projected proficiency, I'll give pause prior to presenting this data. We know that this year, we have new math standards. And along with the new math standards, we'll have a new Georgia Milestones assessment. So this data, it does show for us how our students are performing on this normed assessment. However, we are cautious to say that it will accurately predict how our students will do this spring on this year's math assessment, because that math assessment has to be linked, there has to be a Lincoln study. And so until we give that assessment and one year of study, will we know if it is a strong predictor? Nonetheless, we can use this data to see how our students are preparing, excuse me, performing this fall compared to how they performed on a similar assessment last fall. And so again, I will report to you that our students in mathematics, again, we have fewer students who are at the level one red, and more students this fall at this time who are in the blue, which is distinguished, and then the green, which is proficient. As I move forward, I have included for you, this is a chart that shows you over time from fall to fall, how our students have grown. And so on this particular report, you see that there are bars. That is the observed growth. That's how much growth our students had from last fall to this fall in that grade. And do know that those are not the same students, but how students in that grade are performing. Last fall's first graders, this fall's first graders. We were trying to meet the diamond, and the bars demonstrate where we actually achieved. And so by looking at this, what you would like to see is that the bar and the diamond would come together. And so you do see that, for instance, for third grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, and tenth grade, we are seeing that the observed growth and the projected growth are coming together. When we look at reading student growth, comparing students from last fall to this fall, I'll point out to you, remember that last year, we did not take the growth in kindergarten or first grade. So you don't have any growth there. There's, we don't have a comparison point. Nonetheless, what you'll see here, again, observed growth over projected growth, you'll begin to see in the fourth and fifth grade that those two metrics are coming together. They're closer together. We'll move now into our Lexiles. We know that Lexile is the measure that is used to determine the grade level in which students are reading. This data set compares to the state, the midpoint of the stretch Lexile band. So basically, what that means is that for each grade level, there is a range of reading where students should be. And in terms of achievement on our state report card, the state looks at the students getting to the middle of that range. And so these numbers represent the percentage of students who have already, in the fall of this year, gotten to the midpoint. And so you'll see that you do see a slight difference in our third grade this year compared to our third graders last year. Sixth grade, our students are not quite as strong as they were last year. And again, I point you back to last spring, Georgia Milestones, when I said our fifth grade achievement did decline. And you see that when those students moved into the sixth grade. So that highlights for us that that is an area that we need to work on. But I'll also bring your attention to fifth grade, to eighth grade, and to ninth grade, where you see that there are some improvements. And there are a couple of grades where we're about the same as we were last year. Okay? As I finish out, we know that we have been implementing Orton-Gillingham in grades K through two. Teachers have been trained in implementing this program. These are the results.
Excuse me, I have to tell you, can I ask a question while Mr. Brown gone?
Sure.
I'm just kidding.
You sure? I won't tip him. Okay, okay, so for Orton-Gillingham, do know that our benchmark, our goal is to be at 80% mastery. And so we certainly have some work to do. Our kindergarten, kindergarten students, they are coming in this year around where they were last year, at 13%. You can see that our first-grade students are much stronger than they were this time last year, so as our second-grade students. And so oftentimes, we'll see at the beginning of the year, some of our data lags. But we'll be able to come back to you in the middle of the year to show you what that progress does look like. And so what are our next steps as a Teacher and Leader Effectiveness Division and as a Teaching and Learning Department? We continue to focus on grade-level text. And, you know, our vision for instruction is that students read, write, speak, and solve on grade level every day. We have been able to celebrate some great wins. We went to Atkinson and celebrated Atkinson, Crescent, and Jordan Hill for their third-grade reading growth. Much of that we can attribute to reading on grade level and providing those texts and content areas. That is something that we continue to do. Dr. Greer has rolled out the Science of Reading, the Letters Training. We are happy to say that we have also brought on Cohort Two. And so they have begun that Letters work, and we continue to train our teachers in Orton-Gillingham in grades K through two. The next support, so to speak, that you see there is that the executive officers, the content coordinators, the entire TLE team are supporting schools in how they prepare for grade-level reading. And then also, Dr. Thompson has been working his professional learning plan in math. We know that we have new math standards and new learning plans. We brought a request to you last meeting to get reproducibles in math. So he will continue to work with teachers and those teams to get those out. I'm going to jump to the last bullet point. We are really excited that the Department of Education has somewhat chosen us to provide some continued math support. And what that looks like, they'll be coming in to do a math leadership series with principals, assistant principals, and coaches to support them in the rollout of the new math standards. And then also, our teachers will have an opportunity for free professional learning in K-2 bands, 3-5, and then in secondary. So we'll continue to support our math teachers with that. And then finally, we have selected fifth grade, because we know fifth grade was a problem of practice for us last year. And then also, moving into sixth grade to make sure that we continue to support our scholars that we've identified had some gaps in math. And then ninth grade, our Algebra I, we have started a breakthrough series. And that is where those leaders and teachers have executive coaching, where the district management group meets with them weekly, and they look at targeted groups of students and strategies and interventions that they can put in the classroom to help support our scholars. This has been an update on our beginning-of-the-year data. Are there any questions at this time?
Leagues, are there any questions at this time? All right, let's go with Mr. Doss of the Second. And then after he's done, the gentle lady from the Fifth, and then I will ask my questions.
I had my question, and then I think you answered it at the end, but I just wanted to make sure. We have identified, obviously, last year was fifth grade, this year is sixth grade. And explain to me again what supports we're putting in place since we have identified that particular grade level to be able to improve that.
And to that, because that's part of my question too, when you answer it, can you, the support that we're providing for administrators, the support that we're providing for scholars, and of course, the support that we're providing for our educators as well?
Okay, great. And so we know that last year, our Georgia Milestone scores show certain grade levels. Students did not perform at the same level as other students. And so we identified last year was our fifth grade. And so we knew that we want to tackle that two ways. One, by looking at fifth grade, supporting teachers, and then also taking that support up into middle school, because we know that those students, those fifth-grade students, many of them have matriculated into middle school. So we have a plan, the coordinators have a plan of support for every school, mainly our Acceleration Zone Schools, okay? And those plans of support include the coordinators going out, working with instructional coaches in those buildings. They are in schools, planning with them during their professional learning communities, providing resources for them. We today even had a learning walk where we're going out as an entire division and other divisions at the central office go along with us to look for those problems of practice, so that we'll know where to push in the support. As far as scholars are concerned, we have high-quality instructional materials in every content. That's one area or way that we're going to support them. We have received great feedback that students- Uh, we have received great feedback that, um, students and teachers are excited that kids have textbooks and materials, um, by which they can, um, you know, study, take those materials home, um, and so that parents can continue to, to support their scholars. Um, so the high-quality instructional materials, we've had professional learning, um, so that teachers know how to roll out, um, the, the professional learning. And so then I talked about in particular the Breakthrough. And so what Breakthrough is, it is an external coaching provider. And so, um, we have selected, um, several elementary schools. I could probably call them off, um, if, if you asked for the particular schools. Um, but we've, um, looked at schools that, um, showed a need for that, and they have a coach that meets with teacher teams weekly. And, and so doing it, doing that, they look at a particular group of students that they have identified, that they wanna support. Um, those students, they're, um, we're mainly implementing iReady. Um, but in addition to that, weekly, teachers are looking at that data and planning small group instruction for those students. And what Breakthrough does for us is weekly, they'll provide the data to say, this number of students made progress, this number of students did not make progress, what are we gonna do about those students? And my, um, most of the TNL team is participating in that, but we have a focus on math, so Dr. Thompson is the coordinator, um, that is responsible for that. And so when I go back to leaders, um, particularly in math, the support that they're about to receive from the Department of Education is really a series on what should I know as a building leader to help my school, help my teachers, help my scholars, um, in implementing the new math standards and the lesson. That's on the math side, um, and that's, you know, we, we have, um, some work K all the way up through ninth grade. And then, of course, the letters really does the same thing on that, on that literacy side. That's just to name a few.
While we're still on, on that, Dr. Taylor, you mentioned high-quality instruction. Of course, that's what we always aim for, to ensure that our scholars are receiving that kind of instruction. But I just think we need to dig a little deeper on exactly what is that looking like? So, we know that we are providing resources to teachers to be able to teach. Can we just dig a little bit deeper on what does that look like? How is it structured? Because it, it looks like, you know, as board members, we are approving programs and different things to provide and help with that support. So can you just dig deeper on the supports that, that, that we're providing for the high-quality instruction when you're talking about supporting teachers, supporting administrators, and then supporting our scholars?
So, um, and I'm not sure if this is to answer your question, but our four, uh, non-negotiable practices, or the four things that we focus on, is, uh, supporting teachers, um, in preparing their lessons in the, in the, um, professional learning communities. Okay? And so with that being said, we have provided training on, uh, what are professional learning communities. Um, we walk hand in hand with leaders, um, to do classroom observations. Um, we provide professional learning on look fours, what to look for. Um, we have ensured that the instructional framework is posted in every classroom. You know, that's another non-negotiable and evidence-based, um, practice in every, um, that, that we expect in every classroom. Um, we have high-yield instructional strategies that we're focusing on. Um, we provide training on questioning and summarizing. As far as the middle school and high schools are concerned, we've taken, uh, teachers and leaders to Avid. Um, the Avid strategies are engagement strategies, so that again, when we talk about students reading, writing, speaking, and solving daily, that is a framework by which scholars, um, can engage in the classroom, so that they have academic ownership.
So you mentioned taking teachers to Avid and the different conferences. So how, how was the redelivery for those particular programs? And what, I guess, as you're on the ground, what are teachers saying as it relates to those strategies that, that provide that support?
What are the teachers saying? Um, we have mixed, mixed comments there, um, about...
Can we get into those, to those comments? Like, what are the mixed comments?
I, I'll think about that, so that I'm, I'm not just telling you what I think, but providing you what I know. That wasn't anything I prepared this afternoon.
So what, what do you know about the redelivery and how teachers are receiving it?
Well, Avid is really not anything that has to be redelivered, 'cause we've taken like fifty teachers in a year. So they come back and they deliver it in their classrooms.
Okay.
And so as far as our observations, um, we, our Advanced Learning Coordinator, um, focuses on Avid and makes sure that, uh, Avid is, is up and running and implemented. We have an observation tool, and I'll be sure to bring you, um, the observations if, if that's what I hear you asking for.
Because you have, it seems like you have fifty teachers that have been trained, and then they're, they are executing it in their classrooms for their scholars. But what about the teacher next door that did not go to that Avid training?
That's not the focus for that teacher, except for questioning and summarizing. Though, that's where we got those strategies from, Avid. And so our central office, the TNL team, they're responsible for that redelivery. And so when we go out to do observations, that is a question on our observation tool, if those Avid strategies are being implemented and how effective they are.
And when you do your walkthroughs and you're, you're doing your, what do you call it when you, was it?
Learning walks.
Learning walks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you're seeing these strategies being used in the classrooms by scholars, I mean, from everybody that's engaging in the actual lesson?
Hey, repeat that question.
So you're seeing these strategies being used by scholars that are in the classroom, that are engaging at every level?
Sometimes.
Okay. And so what do we, if we're not seeing it all the time, what feedback are we providing to help them so that these scholars can get to Levels Three and Level Four and be proficient and distinguished?
The professional learning, the feedback in the professional learning communities hand in hand with principals and teachers?
Okay. We're not getting a little... I'll come back. Ms. McDonald, go ahead.
Mr. Brown? Dr. Taylor, how many, when you do the learning walks, how many people are we talking about going into a classroom?
Uh, we take, try to take no more than three, three or four into each classroom.
Would these be in classrooms where you have a veteran teacher, a brand-new teacher, middle-of-the-road as far as service? I mean, it could be any, is it everyone? Is it...
It is our goal to see every teacher.
Okay.
Is that, is your question about who gets observed, or is it who is observing?
Well, if I'm a brand-new teacher and I'm now, oh, 'cause it didn't work, two and a half, three months in, and three people walk in my room, probably with my principal, and could be an AP also, I, I just probably would, I would be really, uh, annoyed, because I think for a brand-new teacher, do they know that they're gonna be, have a learning walk? Are they, are they, do they know you, you guys are coming in there?
Yes, ma'am. These are announced.
Okay, good.
And their principal has that conversation with them. Um, and so learning walks are not evaluative. Um, they are really for us to evaluate our implementation of our instructional vision. So if we say we're reading, writing, speaking, and solving.
Right.
You know, we're implementing high-quality instructional material, it is our way to go in and really inspect our practices.
Okay. That, that makes me feel better about that.
So, yes.
Because if you have a twenty-five to twenty-seven-year teacher and three people walk in the room, I mean, I got better at it. You know what I'm saying? It just, uh, I just wanna be sure we're not intimidating people by the number of people that come in the door.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that. And my second question, going back to the OG, the fall trend comparison. Thank you. So the thirty percent means that first graders in the fall are at thirty percent of eighty percent mastery. Is that what that, how that reads?
Thirty percent of first graders have met the eighty percent proficiency.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right. So in looking at the proficiencies, what trends and patterns were documented last year to improve the MAP scores in August?
Okay, so you said last year, what trends and patterns were...
Documented last year to improve our scores in August.
What trends or patterns were documented to improve the scores for this year? So, and I wanna make sure I, I hear your question and answer that correctly. Is it like, what trends did we have last year? What were, what were we showing as grade levels that needed improvement last year?
Right, that needed improvement. And how were they implemented and documented so that in August, we saw that there was improvement?
I know how we document.
Yes, sir.
So I, I think the question is, if the question is what trends and patterns, I would ask that the board be reminded of a few things. The MAP scores from last year may have been indicative of performance for students this year, as well as the teachers. The purpose of MAP is trying to figure out how students are going to perform on last year's milestones. Carrying those trends and patterns and that feedback into this year serves no purpose because we were trying to prepare for the last year's assessment, unless I'm misunderstanding the question.
I think you are. So in looking at the data from last year, all right, and understanding in having the data, the scores, what did you notice last year that will help you in coming in August and taking MAP that will be able to help them and support them so that they see what was documented for the improvement of the scores for the scholars?
I, I think this is gonna be an inherent misunderstanding, because my understanding, last year at the beginning of the year, we were trying to determine where the students were in their levels of proficiency and mastery, to make sure that they're progressing to get to the middle of the year. Again, that's an iterative process. Carrying last year's beginning-of-the-year data into this year's beginning-of-the-year, unless it's, unless you're talking about for instructional practices. But, but again, we're talking about assessment, and, and so I, I'm not sure that I can answer that, uh, because I, I don't make the connection.
But don't the instructional practices support and help the scholars being able to perform?
Provided that the instructional practices are aligned to where the scholars are needed to demonstrate proficiency. I'm gonna reiterate, you're talking about the beginning of the year. Me carrying data from August to October of twenty-two into twenty-three for an assessment that was given in May of twenty-three, I don't understand the rationale for that.
So you don't understand that whatever those trends were last year probably won't carry on to them taking the...
In the absence of middle-of-the-year and end-of-the-year data, no, because that, that could have been resolved by January. So, so if you're talking about beginning-of-the-year trends or all-of-the-year trends, that's different. That's why I'm asking you if I understand the question. But if, if you're talking about beginning-of-the-year to beginning-of-the-year, mm-mm.
So there were no trends and patterns documented?
I'm not saying that there were no trends, but if you're asking me, what did we, what did we use last year to, to, I guess, dictate what we're gonna do this year? That's end-of-year data, not beginning-of-the-year data.
So what was done last year at the end of the year, in recognizing whether, in seeing the data, and looking at, uh, when you're looking at students who are performing, beginning, developing, proficient, or distinguished?
Correct.
Last year doesn't help to provide any type of support for what happened in August?
No, that's not what I'm saying. And that's not, that wasn't the question that I heard. What I thought I heard you say, and then I'm gonna leave it, what were the trends last year that we're using to inform this year? What I couldn't get you to clarify is, are you talking about the entire year? Because the purpose of MAP is to ensure that students are progressing and prepared to demonstrate what they've learned relative to proficiency on the Georgia Milestone assessment, which is an, a summative assessment all year long.
Summative assessment, that is correct.
The assessment has already been administered. Just because a student demonstrated a, a, a performance level last year does not mean that we're, we're going to align instructional practices based on that solely. If you're asking what are the instructional practices that we're, that we're focused on, she mentioned two of them, questioning and summarizing. The other one is a focus on making sure that everything is grade level. I'm not, I still don't understand the question, uh, and we can talk more about it offline. But I am clear when I say, I, I'm not asking teachers to focus on one segment of formative data and, and then use that to direct or dictate what the coming year is gonna look like. That would assume that there will be no growth throughout the rest of the year. Does that make sense?
I mean, what you're saying makes sense, but I would just argue that it would determine whether there will be growth. She said we're gonna leave it alone, so...
Fair enough.
But I think, Mr. Brown, if, if I may, I believe what he's asking is that weakness of student A, B, and C are gonna be different most often. And as you move from one academic year to the next, I believe I hear Mr. Brown saying, with the weaknesses of student A identified, what are we doing this year to help those weaknesses move up to a more positive score? Correct, Mr. Brown? Because as a, I mean, we used to do that ourselves.
Somewhat. We, we can, we can continue. We can talk more about it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I appreciate that, uh, Ms. McDonald. All right, moving to my next set of questions. And, you know, how many programs have we purchased in the past to improve our reading and math scores? Uh, Dr. Simmons?
I'll get that to you next week, sir.
All right. And a follow-up from that, so you'll get that to me. And then also trying to understand the returns that we're getting from these programs as well.
Understood.
Are you gonna get that to me? Okay, great. All right, and then Friday was a good indicator, when the State School Superintendent was here to award our leaders in literacy. It was a great indicator of the things that we are doing in Griffin Spalding and the things that we can brag about. But one of the things that was said is that we still have work to do. Until all eleven elementary schools are recognized like that, we still have work to do. And so as we continue to look at, we've always said that MAP scores are an indicator of how our scholars will perform on the Georgia Milestone. Is that true or false?
That's accurate.
It's accurate, so that's true. And in that, when I go and we look at the data and we see the scores, and you look at third-grade reading in ELA, um, looking at where the state performs, and then we look at our scholars, where they are being proficient and distinguished, we fall below that. And so in hopes that, you know, it's good that we celebrate the success and we celebrate the growth of our scholars, but we know that we have work to do. And so in this, understanding the trends, understanding patterns, how can we, how are we able to, uh, move forward? I mean, we have the next steps, but something is not working. And so we have to be able to come together and figure out what is working and what's not working, so that we get the best outcomes for our teachers with high-quality instruction, we get the best outcome from our administrators as they are doing their learning walks and observations, and then of course, most importantly, that our scholars are getting that instruction so that they can be proficient and distinguished learners. And, I mean, we can continue to talk about it, or it could just be a statement. So we're gonna continue to talk about it, or we're just gonna leave it there?
We'll leave it there.
All right. All right, next on the agenda, are there any other questions for this? Nope. All right. Information items, policy, EGB. Information items, policy EGB, Student Assurance Program, first reading. Are we going to go through these policies or... Okay, on first reading, okay. Policy GAD, PL Opportunities, first reading, Blazers, Blazer Works, Maxim and Steppenstone's Partnership Extension, Policy IDAG Values, Character Education, IDV, Health and Personal Fitness, first reading, Policy JVC, Social Security Numbers, first reading. For, I do have a question, though, for the social security numbers, because the way it looks like, is there a regulation that is attached to that as well?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, and Policy JK Solicitation's, first reading, and Policy JRA Student Data Privacy Complaints, first reading. All right, we're now at Board Member Comments. We'll start to my left, the gentleman of the third. Any comments?
None at this time.
All right, gentleman of the second?
None at this time.
Gentle lady of the fifth? And gentle lady of the fourth?
Well, I just want to thank the staff for the work that they did on the presentations tonight. It's been very informative. I appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you, and there are none from the gentleman of the first. All right, we are going into executive session.
And seeing our safety officer, Mr. Britt, I think he's still sitting back there, I can't see. There you go. I was, and I think Mr. Doss couldn't elaborate, but I was told that he did a magnificent job of representing us going out to the hospital and facilitating, helping facilitate the unfortunate shooting and death of one of our students. So I just want to acknowledge that and let that be known for those that don't know what Officer Britt did. And so I just want to thank him for that.
There were several that were out there, Ms. Ray, and I don't want to start naming names because I know our athletic director and different ones, Mr. Brown was there. And so, yes, thank you, that's such a tragic situation.
All right. We do have executive session. We are going to executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the periodic evaluation and rating of the superintendent. Are there any other issues to go into executive session about?
Threat and litigation, I'll have my microphone.
All right. So we'll be going to executive session for threat and litigation and to discuss and deliberate upon the periodic evaluation and rating of the superintendent, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to executive session. Second. It's been properly moved by the gentleman of the second and seconded by the gentle lady of the fifth. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five zero, we're in executive session, we'll be right back.